You ready, Attorney? Attorney Woodward, you ready? Okay. We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, which is Monday, December 20. Our invocation will be done by Reverend Henry Pippins, Jr. of Heritage Baptist Church. After that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together to do your business for our city. We pray your blessings on our city. We pray that you will continue to protect us and lead us and guide us in the right direction. We pray and ask for your wisdom tonight as we guide our city to greener pastures and let your blessings continue to fall and protect us as we go into the new year. Help us to use your wisdom and your guidance to do your bidding for our city that it might be blessed more and more. Thank you, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Reverend Pippins, we appreciate the invocation. Thank you so much. Under announcements and presentations, I'll just go over our protocol very quickly, and then we can get into our meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville City Council Meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville, and this is a regular meeting. Well, we will take official action on the items that were discussed last Thursday at our work session, and so it'll just go a little bit differently than it did last week. If you have comments to make on those items, we would ask that you, that our public hearings, we'd ask that you would come forward if you have different information to share with us during that time, but if it's the same information, you don't have to repeat the information that you had given us last week. So we'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville City Council Meeting. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there is ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business, and you can have five minutes to come and talk to us about any business that's germane to the City of Douglasville. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, speak to the audience, or carry on conversations when you're in front of us, in front of the microphone. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments on zoning matters. If you have a cellphone or any social media or device, electronic device, we'll ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those cellphones and all that off until the meeting is over. And so this is how the meeting will be handled. Each person will come forward that has the committee chairperson. If you have an item, if you are the applicant or representing that item, we ask that you would come forward and give your name and address for the record. Each side has 20 minutes, those that are in favor of the item and those in opposition, and each person has its totality 20 minutes for, 20 minutes against, and each person has five minutes to speak. So prior to coming to the podium, there are some cards that are outside in addition to the cookies and water, and you can fill out the card. It's a blue card. Bring that forward and hand it to our City Clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right, please. And then when you come forward, give your name and address for the record. And each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question and debate, and we're going back and forth, question and answer and debating, which is here to hear the information taken into consideration and vote. And tonight is a voting meeting, so that is how the meeting will go. So now we'll follow the agenda, and I'll go to item number five, which are the minutes, and I will open the floor for the minutes of the Legislative Work Session and Executive Sessions of December 2, 2021, and the committees, meetings, and executive session and regular meeting of December 6, 2021. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Do we recognize or the council receive any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Thank you, I don't see any. It's been properly moved and second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved as presented. Now I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or any deliberation as it relates to the consent agenda from the elected officials? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. We will move on then to Committees of Number Seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to Item Number Eight, which is Finance Committee, and that's chaired by Council Member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Four items tonight under Finance. First one is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Croy Engineering LLC for professional engineering and design services for the construction of a shared-use path extending along State Route 92/Dallas Highway and East Strickland Street from State Route Highway 92 alignment to the proposed Macarley Street Railroad Crossing. We had discussed this on Thursday night, and Ms. April McCowen, I believe, has some additional information for us. Ms. McCowen?
No additional information. April McCowen, I'm sorry, 6701 Church Street, no additional information. However, the information provides you, gave you the project's scope of work, the adjustment as far as going from the $150,000 to the adjusted 997 and compensating that with additional funds from the state and a matching local fund of 199,526. And as a reminder, this will be pulled from SPOLOST, and the contract would begin NTP or Notice to Proceed, I'm sorry, would begin January the 1st of 2022, should you proceed with the contract.
Thank you, Ms. McCowen. My apologies. Was there a map added into the attachment as far as giving us a general idea and scope of where we were speaking of this project? Did I?
We did not add it to the contract. We, that was a physical piece of paper that we decided to run really quickly and be able to provide to you guys, but it does, so I do apologize for it not being in your packet for tonight, but it would include the Macarley Street Railroad Crossing, which is in the New Horizons community, and then connect to the 92 tie-in there. So it would go from Stewart Middle School, and it would conduct a shared-use path along with some pedestrian crossways for the Safe Routes to School program, as well as the Complete Streets program.
And I believe you mentioned on Thursday night, the reason one of the large increases in the potential cost was the roundabout that may or may not have been planned originally. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Questions, comments? We're going to move quickly, folks. Got a lot going on. If there are none, then I thank you all. Thank you, Ms. McCowen. I make a motion that we approve Item 21-139.
Thank you so much, Mr., okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's been made a motion by Chair Councilman Adams and a second by Council Member Davis to approve Item 21-139. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-139 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with LMI Systems LLC for the replacement of NDAA and FCC compliant Tyco Illstra cameras and to upgrade cameras. Mr. Jenkins is going to give us information on that in our discussion on Thursday night. I think we'd covered it, but just in case there's other information or questions that you might have. Mr. Jenkins.
Hello, everyone. Sam Jenkins, IT Manager, 6695 Church Street. I have no additional information that will present in executive session, but I can ask any other question that you may have.
Counsel, Madam Mayor. Questions, comments? Okay. I think you all actually heard me when I said we were going to move along, right? Thank you all. I make a motion that we approve then Item 21-590.
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's been moved by the Chair and second by Mayor Pro Tem to approve Item 21-590. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, this motion carries unanimously. 21-590 is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll go to Item C. Authorize the mayor to sign a change order number 10 with Integrated Construction and Nobility Incorporated to install concrete abutments for the proposed bridge with helical piers designed by the structural engineer at Willing Workers Park. Mr. Thompson?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street. I don't have any additional information for you guys tonight. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I believe you were trying to cover us just in case we did find soils that were substandard where we would have to go to helical piers for that walkway bridge at Willing Workers. That's not to say we'll have to, correct? But we may have to.
Well, we have to.
We do have to, okay.
Yes, it is required, it's a requirement from our third-party geotechnical engineer.
Okay. I know we discussed this on Thursday night, just wanted to make sure I had my story straight here. Questions, comments? Anyone? We thank you, Mr. Thompson. Don't seem to have any questions. We thank you very much, sir. Then we'll move forward and make a motion that we approve Item 21-592.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve Item C. Is there a second, please? Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. It's been properly moved and second to approve Item 21-592. Do we have any additional comments from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-592 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more item under Finance tonight. Authorize the sale of a 2015 Mack truck, MRU 613, with front loader, VIN number 1M2AV04C9FMO12557, to the Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority, and authorize the mayor to sign documents associated with the sale. Ms. Hampton, your name is beside that. Did you have comments there?
Not technical comments, but I have operational comments. So if you have any technical comments about the truck, Mr. Roberts is here, and he will be able to answer. But as we discussed on Thursday, this would help the Water and Sewer Authority out in disposing some of the things that they need to dispose that we aren't necessarily able to help them with. Both the Executive Director at the Water Sewer Authority and Mr. Roberts have discussed, and this is a way for us to be able to help them out and dispose of a piece of equipment that we may have had to dispose of on our own through possibly the auction.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that information. Madam Mayor, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Just appreciate the collaborative spirit that Mr. Roberts has and has continued to have that relationship with all the agencies, but especially for WSA, and this was a unique and sensitive topic, and so we're happy to be able to help and give the front load so they'll be able to get rid of that wastewater treatment plant. I'm not even going to say what it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All righty. Seeing none, then we'll move forward, make a motion that we approve Item 21-600.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and second by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Council Member Estes to approve Item 21-600. Do we have any additional comments? I know we've had some conversation. Any more deliberation as it relates to this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-600 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have under Finance tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Job well done. We'll move on then to Item Number Nine, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, and that is chaired by Council Member Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Housing and Community Affairs Committee. It is to adopt a resolution to approve additional bond issuance by the Housing Authority of Douglas County, and the principal amount not to exceed $5 million for its private activity bonds for the purpose of carrying out the multifamily affordable housing project known as the reserves at Douglasville located at 7669 and 7755 Highway 92 in the City of Douglasville, application by the Housing Authority of Douglas County. Here, Mr. Attorney Fowler, hello.
Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 49. The TEFRA hearing was conducted this morning at 9:00 a.m. in my office. No one appeared, which frankly is customary, and we had appreciated approval of this issuance of the additional $5 million in debt for the project just to the north of town. Any other questions? I'd be more than glad to answer them. Otherwise, we'd appreciate the motion, and if possible, if we could have, and I was speaking with people earlier about this, if we could have the resolution signed to the, give it to the Department of Community Affairs tomorrow, that'd be wonderful. And you already have the form of the resolution with you.
Thank you, Attorney Fowler. Do we have any questions or comments from our mayor and counsel?
Okay. If not, I make a motion that we approve Item 21-601.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's been properly moved and second moved by our Chair, Dr. Burdanley, and second by Council Member Adams to approve Item 21-601. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-601 is unanimously approved. You're welcome. That's all you have, Madam Chair.
That's all we have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We'll move on to Item Number 10, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Council Member Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. I authorize the City League Department to give notice of the city intent to consider adopting ordinance that revise the city corporate limits and ward maps to reflect the 2020 U.S. Decentralization Census results. Ms. LeWitt?
Thank you, Councilman Davis. For this item, we do not have additional information. City staff and our GIS consultants are working diligently to redraw the map, and we will have something before the 27th because that is when we plan on having the public notice published. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I do have a quick question. So we're giving notice to the citizenry that we are considering adopting an ordinance and revising the city, the wards. So we're just giving notice that we're, this is signed that we're giving notice that we're going to do that, but we haven't done it.
That is correct because it is an amendment to the city charter, and per state law, it needs to have two enactments, so you will see this multiple times. And there is the three-week publish, public notice requirement as well that needs to be completed three weeks, at least three weeks, sorry, once a week for three weeks before the second adoption. So we're trying to make sure that we adopt this new amendment to the city charter, amendment to the city wards, to be prepared for future elections. It may be county elections that are coming up in 2022. The next city election is in 2023.
Okay, so you'll bring all of that information to us to show us where the lines are?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll be at the next meeting, Ms. Lynn. Bring it to us at the next meeting in January?
We will bring it to the next meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve 21-591.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved and second moved by the Chair, Council Member Samuel Davis, and second by Council Member Estes to approve Item 21-591. Do we have any additional comments or any more conversation as relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-591 is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, Item B, 21-594, we'll take no action at this time.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to Personnel and Organization Committee. The Vice Chair is Council Member Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Planning and Development Committee, Item Number 12, and that, the committee chair is Council Member Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Several items tonight. Under Planning and Development, we'll begin with Item A. Consider approval of an application for temporary business registration for Arc Point Labs of Douglasville for Edie Swagger Green at 3150 Golf Ridge Boulevard, Suite 101, pending approval of their application for special land use permit for this use. Ms. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. Staff doesn't have any new information.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant with us, Ms. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just in case there may be questions or comments for the applicant, I know all of us were not here on Thursday. Ma'am, if you would please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, there may be a question.
Edie Swagger Green, 572 Chapel Lake Circle. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Anyone have any question or comment for the applicant in our consideration of this item? I know we had been given some information on Thursday. Anyone? Ms. Green, I do have a question, just as a what-if. Of course, occasionally, we do have a situation like this come up where the applicant has, for whatever reason, has not received all of the approvals that they may need, and of course, you may or may not have understood that you needed a special land use permit at the time that you came in to apply for a business license. Is that the case?
That is the case, sir.
Okay. I understand you're leasing space from a local owner there on, is it on Golf Ridge?
It is, 3150 Golf Ridge.
And I remember you sharing with us on Thursday your experience in this field, and you're just changing, maybe changing gears, so to speak, from one part of the profession to another.
Trying to prepare for retirement.
There you are. There you are. Well, we certainly don't want to get in the way of progress or hold you up in any way, but we just want to make sure that we do have controls in place that would cause us then to stop the process if, in fact, this special land use permit were not then carried on. So is there a schedule? Mr. Anderson, do you have a schedule of when that would be heard?
Yes, sir. We anticipated it being heard the first Tuesday in February.
Because we do not have any in January, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the next one that we could possibly hear it in?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we did, in fact, have that on the schedule. Okay? Would you like to say anything else, Ms. Green?
No, just thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments of counsel before we go forward? Seeing none, then I would ask that, I would make a motion that we do approve this item, and I've got to get my numbers here. Item 21-587, request motion for approval.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved and second moved by the Chair, Councilman Adams, and second by Council Member Davis to approve Item 21-587. We've had some conversation. Do we have any more deliberation as it relates to this item? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 21-587 is unanimously approved. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Item B, hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance to reduce the required 15-foot side yard principal structure setback in Section 4.08B of the Unified Development Ordinance for a variance of 12 feet for a remaining requirement of three feet on the east and west side of a lot, and two, a variance to allow paving within the east and west side of a lot, and two, a variance to allow paving within the required 10-foot landscape strip setback in Section 8.02E6A of the Unified Development Ordinance on the east, west, and north sides of a lot of 1.043 acres at 5621 Fairburn Road, Land Lot 52, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 18. Application by Integrity Construction, care of Ali V. Yago. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. I'd like to provide some clarification on some information I gave on last week. The applicant has not received, approved, have not received an approved variance before from council. What they did receive was an approved combination plaque in 2018. They submitted an application for a variance in late 2018, and they came back this year. And after two years, the application had expired, not the variance. The variance does not expire.
The variance was never placed, was never even requested, is that correct?
No, the application was never processed for some, for various reasons. So they came back in 2021, and after two years, the application expired, and they had to resubmit.
Okay, so it has never been heard before this body as far as the variance?
Never been heard before.
Okay, thank you. This being a public hearing, we do need to give opportunity for the applicant, if there's new information to come forward and provide any information they would like to. If the applicant is here or that representative, if they'd please come forward at this time. Okay?
I'm here, but I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions.
Are you the applicant, sir?
I'm the author of the site plan on New York.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would have any information that they would like to share or speak for or against this, it being a public hearing? Our mayor has already given us instructions concerning that. Okay, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. I did request, Madam Mayor, did you have something?
You can read my mind, Mr. Anderson.
I can tell by the look on your face you meant to ask.
Yes, sir. I was concerned about the lot that isn't their lot, but their materials are on that lot. I know you raised that question or concern, and I just, would this variance have anything, any bearing on that? Do they need those materials to build on the, I'm just a little bit confused. Or is that the next item coming up? Mr. Anderson, I'm asking a whole lot. I don't know what I'm asking.
Well, if they get approved, if they get approved, get approval tonight, they would need that material to start construction. But that will be after they get a building permit. But first, they would have to go through the development plan process.
Okay.
So they're still quite a ways away.
So why is the, why are the materials over here on their lot that they don't own instead of their own?
To be honest with you, ma'am, I don't know.
Okay, and that's GDOTs?
Yes, it's GDOT's property, yes. But they, first, they stated that they, that wasn't their materials. But we come to find out that it is, and they admitted that it is. So I guess they're just storing it there.
Does that have any bearing on our, trying to get our permit for our lighting on our gateway?
I wouldn't think GDOT is even aware that that material is on their property, and probably the local engineers who are working on the project probably are not aware of which property is specifically there. So it's probably an opportunity to store material without anyone bothering it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, based on this map, it appears that that lot isn't even in the city. It's shown, it's not shown as being the adjacent lot. See the striping?
It's county?
See the striping on the lot that we're considering, but adjacent does not have that same stripe, does not have that same striping. So that's county.
Hmm. That's very strange.
Other comments or questions? I had a couple of questions for the applicant, and I guess I'm going to have to ask the gentleman that's here representing the construction, development plan, drawing, survey to come forward and let me see if I can get some clarification on a couple of things. Sir, if you would give us your name and address for the record, we would appreciate your attendance.
William Sisk, and it's 743 Maynard Terrace, Atlanta, Georgia.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. In the absence of the owner or the applicant, just cur- Pardon?
Mr. Vic.
Okay, okay. Well, then, maybe we would like to hear from Mr. Vic then in your place, Mr. Sisk. Thank you. And while he's coming forward, if the applicant could come forward, what about code enforcement? Did we get information that we had requested concerning the applicant as far as present citations or the state of any case that was pending? Has there been any, did staff provide any of that?
Apparently, they do not have any open violations.
Okay, thank you. How are you, sir? Would you come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Ali Yago Victor. My address is 5621 Fairburn Road, Douglasville, Georgia.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here. Glad that you came in, Mr. Yago. I had a couple of questions. I know that this being in Ward 2 of our city, myself and Councilwoman Miller next to me are the Ward Councilmen for this ward, and we have had various concerns and various issues over the last number of years. I don't know how long you have been in the location. I can't, I can't answer my own question there, but how long have you been operating there?
I've been there since 2011.
2011?
Yes.
So you've been there 10 years. It appears that what you are attempting to do is to, having combined the two lots into one, you're attempting to build a new structure that would not necessarily be connected to the present structure, but would potentially be connected via a walkway or a shelter. What is the plan there?
Oh, my plan is to build a seaside garage so I can be able to walk inside the garage and at the same time to store the tires inside the bay because of the rain and because of the mosquitoes. So we want to try to move the tires and put them inside the bay and also walk over there at the same time.
Okay. And on Thursday night, we asked a question about the building package that was there on an adjacent piece that our mayor pro temp has mentioned. That building package has been there on the premises for how long?
Two years.
Two years, okay. So it is, it is a building package that you have already purchased?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to assume that should you get this variance, then you would then at some point provide a building development plan to the city that would incorporate the use of that building package that's been lying there that long?
We purchased the building when the engineer was walking over there and he applied for the permit with the issue to him, but we were having some little issue to finish with the WUSA before the coronavirus stepping. That is the reason why we couldn't be able to use the permit that was issued to us to build the, to put the building up.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just, I'm very concerned that there have been the number of complaints and the number of violations that have come forth from your location over the years. You've been there, you're shaking your head, sir.
I don't have no violation. When the city, when the code enforcement comes here, when they tell me what to do, I obey and I do what they ask me to do. So whenever they tell me, they give me time to do it, and I did it.
All right. Questions, comments? Anyone else?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
So you're going to build a complete new building where you can do business out of changing tires and do your tire business?
Yes.
And the other building, what you're going to use the other building for? Storage?
It's going to be storage. We are going to be stocking my rims because I do sell rims on tires.
Okay, yeah.
The other building is going to be for storage for rims, and the other one is going to be for changing of tires and keep the tires inside the bay.
And you do have a trailer now on site that what you store your old tires in?
Yes.
Okay, good, very good.
Others? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Victor. How are you?
Fine.
Good. I do have a question about, I know you have a lot of tires, and we passed an ordinance not very long ago, maybe 2018 or so, I'm not certain, that you had to have the tires in a trailer. Are all of your, I know you have a lot, you are blessed in abundance. All your tires in a trailer, or do you have some that are outside, or are you able to put them in the trailer?
Yes, I put some inside the trailer, and also the engineer also gave me a project in Ostella. We have a property and have a big land in Ostella. He's trying to build me a storage.
Yes, sir.
Where I can be able to get some workers to use the truck to take some of the tires to the storage and number the tires. So I can be able to have that place empty.
Okay.
Because at this moment, the, the stuff, the order hasn't arrived because of the say coronavirus, they keep telling me about coronavirus all the time. So the trailer, the materials hasn't arrived, that's why they have not been able to finish it.
Yes, sir.
So my planning is if they allow me to finish this project, I guarantee that no tires will be outside because I have a lot over there that if I finish the seaside garage, I should be able to stock my tires inside the garage.
Inside the garage.
So that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
I'm not trying to make the city ugly or nasty, but I just want to store the tires inside the garage. That's what I'm trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the reason why I'm here.
Yes, sir.
To please, you push or allow me to do it and do it right.
Yeah, so when you come off of I-20 from, off of I-20 on Fairburn, that it'll be an attractive, yes, sir.
Yeah, even the fence, the wood fence I put right now, me myself, I don't like it. It's nice, but it's not my taste.
Right.
I only want to do it right so I can move those tires and put them inside the garage.
Yes, sir.
So that's what I'm trying to do.
Yes, sir. And before you had come, I asked about the building materials. Did you, did they allow you to put your, I guess you have a kit?
Yeah, they answered the kit, yeah.
Yes, sir. They allowed you to put it there? You didn't know it was GDOT's property, or you didn't have enough room on your property, or was it, what's going on with that?
When one of the worker came here, we told him that if we put the materials in my property, it's going to be difficult for us to move it again because when they pour the concrete, we're going to go ahead and start standing the materials. So it's going to be like a little bit difficult. We say as soon as the city approve everything, we start doing the job. That's when we're going to stand the, the mero building and try to finish everything at the same time. It's going to be like transportation, moving it from here to here. So they just allow us to keep it there because the lot is close to the highway.
Uh-huh.
Just joined with my property.
So when they're pouring the concrete, you were just having your area available to, for construction?
Yes. My area that is empty right now, when the permit is approved, the next thing we need to do is to pour the concrete. When they pour the concrete, then we can start standing the material so we can be able to move our equipment out of their site.
So that's the Taco Bell is where you want to put?
Yes.
That, the kit?
Yes.
Of the metal building that's sitting on the other side now?
Yeah, Taco Bell is mine.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I understand. So that 5611 is yours and 5621. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Victor.
Thank you.
Others? Anyone else? Excuse me. Mr. Yago, I have a very, very difficult time supporting doing anything different on the property other than cleaning it up and coming within, within the agreement of the ordinance as far as tire storage. It appears to me that the building package sitting there for two years on property that you don't own, and I would candor that probably the DOT, as our city manager said, may not even know it's there or don't have any idea who it belongs to. The other used tire stores within our community have been required to come within compliance on their tire storage, and it appears that you are wanting to get the variance so that you can now come into compliance. But the fact that you've been out of compliance with that number of tires there for so long, and it's been an unsightly situation, I am concerned that it would, that it will continue that way even with an improvement of, of the space with another building, with a package that's been lying there two years. Did I hear you say that there had been concrete footings poured for that building?
No. I said if you people allow me to, if you approve the permit, then we can now go ahead and pour the concrete before we start moving the materials. As a matter of fact, the materials, some of them are part of my property. Not everything is in Georgia, Georgia Power.
Department of Transportation.
Some of them is my property. So the reason why we left it here is just for us to be able to wait for the city to approve everything before we start moving the materials out of their property. So some of the property, some of the materials are still in my own property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was there a land disturbance permit purchased or given to you before you started all of that work on the property that would now have since more than likely expired? Do we have anything on record, staff? Mr. Sisk, you can come forward, sure.
I don't know if you have anything on record, but according to Mr. Kennedy, there was a land disturbance permit pulled before he started moving dirt around and putting in drainage pipes.
Okay. I don't have any way to verify that at the moment. We don't have our building official here. Anyone else have any question before we move forward?
I have one more.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
If I'm hearing right, you are billing, billing right now to store your tires in another location?
No, it's the same location. It's just a different address. It's a diff, it's joint together. It's close, it's close to each other, 5611 and 5621.
If I may interject, I think he's talking about your property in Ostella.
Oh, no. The one in Ostella is my, it's a rental property at the same, at the same time a land that I purchased. So we're just trying to pour the concrete and build a mero building so I can use that one as a part of my warehouse.
Okay, that, go ahead, sir.
If I might interject, according to Mr. Kennedy, they have a slab in place on that property, and they're awaiting delivery of the metal building from the manufacturer.
On it, at another location?
At another location, which I believe is within Ostella or close to by Ostella.
Okay, and that would be the storage?
Yeah, we do part of it stored here.
Okay, yeah.
And that slab is in place.
In place now, just waiting on their billing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, another question. And this may be a question for staff. There'd been some conversation about the legality of a business, a used tire business having the number of tires on site that we see at that location. Is that, is this business in a legal position at the moment, and I'm asking staff this, to have that many tires outside exposed in the weather as we speak right now?
I would defer to Ms. Ebony Jefferson, but according to the information given at last Thursday's meeting, they were, they are.
Okay, so, Ms. Jefferson, could you come forward? Because I'm confused. I believe the question on Thursday was how many tires there were there and, and what type of business had to be being run there in order for them to be able to store that many tires there?
Good evening, everyone. Ebony Jefferson, 6701 Church Street. According to our meeting last week, they can have, as a tire retail location, which he is because he sells tires, he can have up to 3,000 tires stored on the property.
Okay.
As of current, he is not out of compliance. We have other tire businesses throughout the city that do have tires stored outside of their premises as well. So it's not something that's uncommon.
Stay, 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 Ms. Ebony.
Pardon?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. So Ms. Jefferson, you're saying that currently they are not out of compliance. So the trailer that we put the ordinance in place for all tire establishments or to put their tires in, is that being done?
Yes, ma'am. I've repeatedly spoken with him myself. And he explained to me, actually, like I explained last week, he used to, used to have tires from the ground all the way up to the roof of the building. He has since began moving the tires. And I know due to COVID, he was having issues with getting workers to be able to move the tires to the trailer. So he has begun the process of doing so. And there are not as many tires stacked up as they were.
Right.
Based on our ordinance, of course, they do have to have a container with four sides enclosure, which is what he has out there currently.
Okay, but this is as of recent?
Yes, ma'am.
It was not like that before when we, now there were complaints. There were some, they had gone to municipal court?
Yes. The complaints were primarily for the materials that he had previously, which was the blue material, which was tarp-like material on two metal posts that was like a makeshift fencing to camouflage the tires that were stored on the interior of that particular post. He since removed those items and put up a wooden fence. And so that's been as of within the last three weeks, that a wooden fence has been placed there.
So the ones that are around the building in the back and on the sides are allowed because you can have up to 3,000?
Yes, ma'am. We, of course, we don't count the tires. Of course, we don't count the tires. But based on the ordinance, absolutely, you can have up to 3,000 tires for retail sales. But if you are a homeowner and you decide that you want to have tires, you can't have no more. You know, people sometimes have up to 100 and they are in violation if it was a home, so, yes.
And the, the, the building that's proposed will house all the, the tires that are beyond 3,000?
The building that's proposed should house the tires, including the 3,000 that are on the premises. No more than that can be on the premises total. So it should be inclusive of that amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sure we've probably used all of our time. And I appreciate, Ms. Jefferson, coming forward and helping us with that information. I am, I am very concerned about the area that we're speaking of. And I want to give, I want to give Mr. Iago every opportunity to make good what he is discussing to do. But I am not confident that in the past, with what we have seen in, in the way it appears, that that has been done. I want to see it very different than what it is. I'm not convinced that that will be done. I would, I would hope that, and I know that I cannot do this, but if I were going to vote to make a motion to approve this, I'd like to see some time limits. Because this has been going on for a number of years. You said you've been there since 2011. So I would, if there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion that we table this item. I would like to see it studied a little further and see if we can't come up with some timeframes to get this taken care of, being as where it is located is something that has had a lot of complaints. And I am, I'm not in favor of giving more room in variances to do more of the same when the result may be the same. So my, my motion is going to be to table it to the meetings of?
January 6th.
January 6th.
10th.
And January 10th. That's my motion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to table, table item 21-508 to the meetings of January 6th and 10th. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Miller. It's been properly moved in second to table item B 21-508 to the meetings of January 6th and 10th. Do we have any other comments, any more deliberation as relates to this item? All those in favor of tabling the item till the 6th and 10th meetings of January 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. This item is tabled to the meetings of January 6th and 10th of January 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Iago. And Mr. Seitz, appreciate you all coming in. We'll move on to item C. Consider request for change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential District zoned property to CBD Central Business District for .46 acres at 8218 Dura Lee Lane, Land Lot 831, District 18, Section 2, Parcel 40. Application by Joseph Fowler, Esquire, care of Mark Allen Lee. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. Staff doesn't have any new information, but the applicant is here.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler, do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, I will note that Ms. Whitaker was in fact in an automobile accident last Thursday night.
Oh, no.
She was not here for that purpose. Her car was hit from the rear on the interstate, totaled her car, but she's here and well. And she's here to give you a further explanation of what she proposes to do on site with your permission. May I introduce Ms. Rashida Whitaker. Here, of course, is Mr. Lee as well.
Thank you.
Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, of course. New information. Ms. Whitaker, please come forward.
Hi, how are you?
Name and address for the record.
Rashida Whitaker, 8218 Dura Lee Lane in Douglasville. We are proposing a recording studio, but it is more of a creative space where we will hold music lessons for pretty much all age groups, children all the way up to adults. We will also rent space for people to come in and record their podcasts. I've been getting a lot of requests for that. I currently own a daycare center here in Douglasville. And in the summer, we offer music program for our children. And my response has been overwhelming. Parents want lessons for their children for instruments. I mean, I've been that parent. My children, all of my children play several instruments. So we will have, you know, instructors that will come in and do lessons for children, vocal lessons, record music, podcasts, all kinds of creative things. So it'll be similar to our music school.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Appreciate that information. First of all, we're thankful that you're okay.
Yes.
And Mr. Fowler had mentioned that you were trying to get here from Atlanta, but we didn't know until afterwards that you actually weren't going to be here at all because of an accident. Okay, I will open the floor to see if there are questions or comments concerning this item. Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for coming in and you being determined. We appreciate that. We hope you feel better. Sorry about your.
A little bit of back problems, but it's okay, yeah.
Well, you have a great disposition. You're still smiling.
Thank you.
So I did have a question about the state-of-the-art soundproofing because you're near a daycare center and, and that area is an elementary school, East Side of Burnell Elementary School, not very far away. The county school bus depot or something? So I just, it's a lot of activity in the area. And so I think the applicant or Mr. Fowler, Attorney Fowler, talked to us and said that it would have soundproofing and that you did have hours that are operational and not until midnight. I just was a little bit nervous if there was going to be a recording studio in the sense that someone would come to record an album and that would be, you know, music in a residential quasi-commercial.
Yes, yes, I understand. He did talk to me about that. And right now, we're only going to start with one room that will be recording. Eventually, we may have two, and we will soundproof those rooms. He did talk to me about that.
Okay, okay. So there, and you didn't have any concerns with the neighbor with the daycare? I think you're a couple of doors down?
I don't know where the daycare is. Because I own a daycare too, but I don't think there's, there's one that is maybe a couple of miles down.
It's one block up the street, one block north of you, on the corner.
It's on a corner.
Big A Road and Big B Road and Dura Lee on that corner.
On that cor, okay, okay. Yes, it's going a little further down. But there's probably, I don't know, maybe five or so businesses in that area that's in, in my area.
Okay.
But yeah, we will soundproof the recording studio rooms, definitely.
Okay, and you have a time, you have time, so you're going to start with the?
Well, all of our sessions will be scheduled, of course. We will never be open till midnight. I know they mentioned the midnight thing. I won't be there at midnight. But everything will be recorded. And I think Saturday mornings will probably, that's where most of our parents want lessons. We will do some private lessons, one-on-one with, with the vocal coach. She does a lot of private lessons. And those will be scheduled as well, but most of the time, it would be, I would say Saturdays are our busiest days and then some weeknights. During the day, of course, there won't be a lot of lessons going on unless it's summertime. That's when we'll get more, you know, schedules from there.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I understand. I have three and all of them play instruments.
All of my children.
Tooting of horns and clarinets and flutes.
And chorus and band. I've done it all, yes.
So thank you so much. I appreciate your response. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, others? Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yes, thank you again. And the person, the contractor that is doing the soundproofing, or the experience? Because I worked with a studio in Norcross and it's down in basement in, in the subdivision. And it is padded to the T. And a lot of late nights, we'd be in there, but you would never know we're in there.
You'd never know, yep.
Unless you see the cars parked. And so we don't allow maybe one or two cars. They have the carpool. So is there a big parking lot?
There is a parking lot. I had to guess we would probably be able to fit maybe, what, 10 to 15 cars or so? So it's a pretty decent-sized parking lot, yeah.
Okay, because slamming doors, we, we don't do none of that. It's quiet.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, thank you. We appreciate you coming in tonight, ma'am. If there are no other questions or comments, then I'll make a motion that we approve item 21-550.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. I thought I heard your second was coming. So it's been properly moved in second to approve item 21-550. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 21-550 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Lee. We'll move on to item D. Consider request for approval of a development plan for Somerset at Timber Ridge for 83.299 acres at the intersection of Timber Ridge and Presley Mill Road. Located Land Lot 54, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 2. Plan is dated September 14th, 2021. Application by the Revive Land Group LLC. Mr. Ryan Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. Staff doesn't have any new information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. If the applicant is here, if you do have other information or additional new information, we'd welcome that if you had any, anything you'd like to say. Are there any questions or comments from council or Madam Mayor concerning it? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I know in the application or in our tablets, we have 17 conditions. Would those be included in this as well, Mr. Anderson?
I believe Mr. Anderson shared with us on Thursday night, those conditions are actually printed on the face of the development plan. And so I'm assuming with your signature, then those would become a part of that.
Yes.
Those 17. And I'm, I'm thankful for the agreement and all the work between the homeowners and the neighborhoods and the developer in this item.
Yes, sir. I know that was a lot of heavy lifting.
Any other question or comment? Mr. Anderson, you know the question I always ask. So everything on the development plan, including those conditions, would then be favorable and would be agreeable with the UDO?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Hearing that, then I'll make a motion that we approve item 21-584.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. This was properly moved in second by the chair for, to approve 21-584 and second by Councilmember Estes. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? I don't see any opposition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. 21-584 is unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one other item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Item E. Consider request for revised plat approval for 8555 Bowden Street for the purpose of subdividing into two lots. .8 acres at 8555 and 8559 Bowden Street, Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 0016015D009 and 0016015D102. Application by Mr. David Ferguson. Mr. Anderson?
Ryan Anderson, 6701 Church Street. Staff doesn't have any new information.
Thank you, sir. I understand that this is basically, if, if our plat is online, there is an attachment, and I'm sure that it is. It's just a, it is a split where we have two houses on one parcel. And one of those houses has been sold or is wanting, is trying to be sold. So they need to split that into two parcels. Okay. Questions, comments? All righty. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Seeing none, then I'll make a motion that we approve item 21-599.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I had a, two at the same time. Did you get it, Ms. Acker? Mr. Estes? It's been properly moved in second to approve item 21-599. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And we have one abstention, Councilmember Miller. Ayes have it. 21-599 is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that we have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your hard work and thoughtfulness in going into these items. We'll move on to the next committee and I'll ask the mayor pro tem if you don't mind doing Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no business at this time under the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll move on then to item number 14, Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Public Relations Committee has no business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Estes. We'll move on then to item number 15, which is Public Safety Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, item A, adopted ordinance to amend the imposed maximum speed limit for the city, city streets and roadways. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, mayor and council. This item is on the agenda to make some clerical corrections at the request of the DOT. Well, the chief mayor spoke about it Thursday.
Okay. Any questions from the mayor and council? If not, I'd like to approve this item, number 21-603.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Davis. The chair may have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 21-603. Do we have any additional comments or questions as relates to this item? Thank you. I don't see any hands. All of those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on then to item number 16, Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem to please take that committee as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Recreation, Culture and Tourism Committee has no business at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate you doing all these committees. Technology Committee, this is actually yours, Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
As, as stated prior, the Technology Committee has no business at this time either, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight with transportation.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? Thank you. I don't see any. We'll move on then to updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you so much, Attorney Dotson. Our staff attorney, Ms. Lynn Woodward.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. The police department, Major Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. Just want to say on behalf of the employees of the city, I want to thank the mayor and council for implementing the updated pay study for 2022. I think I speak on behalf of all the employees that will be getting wages adjusted that they really appreciate it, especially considering current market conditions. The other is, if you all don't mind waiting without taking a break, my report in executive session will be less than five minutes.
Thank you, city manager.
Merry Christmas and happy new year.
Hauling cats. Anyway, we'll move on to comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to bring any comments or speak to myself and council members, we invite you to come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to say any, any business or anything that's remained to the city of Douglasville, potential business. Please come forward. No takers, as Councilman Davis has said. I see Mr. Anderson got his hat on. He looking cap-a-fresh. He's ready to get up out of here. Okay. Okay, we don't have any commerce. Oh, yes, sir. Please come forward. I apologize. You can put it back on, Mr. Anderson. I'm just teasing you. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak to us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmembers and Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My name is Asher Levens.
Your last name again?
Asher Levens.
Levens, okay. Yes, sir.
I'm a part of the Department of Labor. I'm one of the veteran reps at the Department of Labor. And the address there is 223 Cortlandt Street, Atlanta 30303. And Councilman Davis invited me because I shared with him that I wanted to, Douglasville's a part of my region at the Atlanta office as well as Fulton. And I'm very thankful for this meeting. This is very insightful. I'm learning a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. You can come anytime and you don't have to wait for Councilman Davis, but we appreciate your time, that you've driven to the west side. You, you see that there's some things going on here, 23 miles from Atlanta. So we appreciate you coming this evening, and you're welcome anytime. Next time, Councilman Davis is going to feed you.
We, we both with that word of faith, so he was so nice to me.
Aw, very good. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from citizens or delegates? That was a delegate coming forward from the Department of Labor. Okay, not seeing any then. I will open the floor for a motion to go into executive session, to adjourn to executive session to discuss property acquisition negotiation. Thank you so much. I have a motion by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It was a hearty second. I think it was a tie between Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Estes. All those in favor of going to executive session, adjourn to executive session to discuss a property acquisition negotiation, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. After a short recess, do we need a recess? Okay, they said no recess. We're going into executive session for five minutes. So we are into ex-